To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This session of the Lincoln County Commission on March 17th, 2011, ten again, stop. Now called order. Members present: Donald C. Whitton, clerk; Charles McCann, president; Charles Vance, commissioner; Thomas Ramey, commissioner. First thing on the agenda, I need a motion to free the minutes of the regular session of the Lincoln County Commission meeting that was held on March 3rd, 2011, at 6:00 P.M.
Motion second, that being all yes vote. Motion carries.
Okay, next thing in the discussion of concern, Sue Burton with West Hamlin Elementary.
Welcome, Sue.
Thank you.
Good to see you again.
Good to be here.
You look very pretty.
Well, thank you. I did this in honor of Sean today.
Yes, so.
He's coming to our school later, and I think he's gonna do an Irish song and dance.
Oh, yeah.
Hey, Wes, tell me what time it is.
One thirty.
Bring the video.
I'll video him, I'll bring it at the next meeting. I just wanna say thank you for letting me come again, and you know why I'm here, I always come and ask for money. But I do wanna thank you, and just to give you a little bit of information, our school did meet AYP last year for the first time in years, and I attribute a lot of that to our partners in education, not only our wonderful Principal Mr. King and Assistant Mr. Davis, and our wonderful staff, but our partners too, because without your all's help and without your donations, I'll just tell you a few things that you have done for us that is very much appreciated. Since we've partnered with you all in the last three years, you have placed books in the hands of underprivileged students, approximately 150 students have received books thanks to your all's donations. You've given 500 students the opportunity to experience a mobile agriculture and science lab, which they wouldn't have got to do without your support. And to kick off our West test, you brought West Virginia Theater to our school. Now, a lot of kids in this county never get to see anything like that, so they were really excited, and that's why I attribute a lot of that, our success in the West test, to our partners in education, because when we did that kickoff, I think that it really got students excited and got them pumped up and let them know that we really care about the results on the test. And we couldn't have done that without your all's help. So today, I'm here to ask for a donation of $800 to go to our spring book fair. And our spring book fair is buy one, get one free, so that we can encourage students to read through the summer. And as you know, it's just a given, if they get to come out and pick out their own books, then they are more likely to read them. If we give them books, they may read them, they may not, but with the money that you all donate to us, they get to come in and pick out their own books, and I see them reading them all the time, and our test scores have proven that. So I'd like to hand each of you the letter. Have them looking, I have a caller. And you all are aware of our secret contest, just do that to keep from embarrassing our kids. So West Hamlin students would very much appreciate a $800 donation so that they can purchase more books at our center than that. Thank you.
We certainly have always had hard work that you do, if you've got a job, but you go beyond that and making things happen over there, I think that it's, talk about meeting the standard, it's part of it, and I think what you said is probably, nobody knows who should get credit, but everybody should get credit. Go text everybody, everybody learns different, everybody needs help, and they never can get enough of it, so I'm sure the involvement of you and the parents make a difference there. At this point, entertain a motion to provide the $800 test request.
So I would just would like to further say that when you look at research around student achievement and the success of schools, one key component of that is the parental involvement and allowing the community and the parents to be full partners in what happens in that particular school. I think what happens at West Hamlin, and maybe some of the other schools across the county, you see Sheila Fraser here from Ranger, and there's different schools in this county that really are models when it comes to making sure that the parents and the community are full partners, and Sue is a leader there, and that's why I'm happy to make the motion, and hopefully can continue partnering in the future.
Thank you.
Good motion, second, provide the $800.
Oh, yes.
And Friday evening, 6:30 to 8, we're having a big community event. You are welcome to come, we'd love to have you come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing on the, we don't, this is not on the agenda, but the next thing we want to do is let Christie Scratch from the Lincoln County Clerk's office, she's wanting to give an update on the purging of the voting system.
Hello, I'm Christie.
Hello. I'm here to sort of discuss the whole purging and how that happens. I know that that was a concern at your all's last meeting from the Republican Chairwoman, Lisa Ramey. I talked to Lisa this morning, and she said she wouldn't be here today, but that she would watch the video and listen to it. I explained to her, one of the things is, if someone is deceased, why are they not off the books? It's illegal for us to go in there to remove someone off the books if we do not have an actual death certificate. From that, we have to get numbers and things that has to be entered, so I explained that to her. The only death certificates that we get is if someone passes away in Lincoln County. If they go to the hospital and pronounced there, that's where the death certificates is at, is in that county. We do from the state get about every three to four months a stack of them, that might be from another county that shows this address, so then we can go in there and remove them. Another question was, why don't we remove people when they move? We can't just take someone's word that someone moved. We actually have to have the paperwork from the new county that they're in. If they're in West Virginia, that's covered, because we're all on the state system. If they're in another state, I received two last week, one from Kentucky and one from Ohio, giving me a copy of their new voters where I could go in there, and then I would have the right to remove them. So I can't just remove it because someone said, you know, someone no longer lives here. We have, the state does NCOA cards that go out every other year. I'm not sure how that's gonna work this year, because there's an election. It's usually, it goes out the years when there's not an election, 'cause it's time consuming. On those cards, if we mail them out with the address that they have of the voter, if those cards do not come back, we enter that. But we cannot just remove someone. You have to take them and move them to inactive first. They have to stay inactive for a while before they can be canceled. It's not something that's easy, just to go in there and cancel a vote. So we should be doing that this year, but like I said, with the election, I'm not sure if the state, they send all the paperwork. Other than that, everything for this election looks good. We have our Democrat and Republican poll worker forms that you all have, and we're ready to go with this election. Everything's covered, we have, you know, everybody in place, and all precincts filled. The only problem really that I see that we've had in the past is not having enough Republican poll workers, where some precincts are not getting open. But Ms. Ramey has told me this morning that she would give us a list of alternates. We have not received that yet. And she said she would give us a list of alternates that would come out that morning, you know, and work. That's sort of a touchy situation, because they say you can't open a precinct without a Republican and Democrat. But then the law book also reads, you cannot be late opening a precinct. So it's sort of, you know, so really Donald, you know, he's the one who would have to make the call, you know, that morning of which way that works and things. So other than that, I mean, I think everything's ready to go, I think everything's up to date. The system, I talked to Dave Nichols from the Secretary of State's office, and he's having Dave Tackett call. The computers, I guess, they were brought here in 2006, the booths that we have, you know, when they switch from paper. So we have like, everybody who's voted since then, but we don't really have prior to that on the computer system where it was just brought here. So we're gonna have to wait a couple more years before you can, you know, take someone to inactive for not voting. You have to give someone two general elections, so that's eight years. So he is supposed to, you know, contact us and let us know how to go in there to remove them and stuff, because they no longer do that. You have to do it as a county, but it's gonna be a couple more years before we can go in there from the names that we have now to be able to remove anyone.
I have a question. Say that I go within my local precinct convention, and my grandmother passed away two years ago, and I tell the workers, my grandmother's on this list, I'd like to have her removed. You're saying that if I can't provide...
The death certificate.
Okay. So if I just tell them that she's dead, they can't go ahead and do that by law?
No. And we see that too, like when I scan the poll books and things, that's on there. People will write that, you know, this person is deceased, there's nothing I can, you know, we can't do nothing with that. We actually have to have the death certificate. So we try to tell everyone, you know, if you know someone is and you know them, have a family member to bring us a death certificate, you know, that's the only way we can remove them.
Well, the good side about that is, as I said, for the voter who comes to vote, they expect their name to be there. So no one should have that name removed without the proper, or the death certificate, or whatever that legal reason is. So I see the side that Donald, you, are protecting the people who are valid voters, and that's your job, is to make sure that everybody has a chance to vote, who's on those books.
Another thing is, people will write in the poll book their new address and scan those. If I go in there and change their address, if the state does not have their driver's license, or the last four numbers of their social, you can't do nothing to that voter. So we're trying to tell everyone, if we don't have one or the other, we can't even change your address. And there's a lot of dress changes, we've done hundreds of them, because all the new addresses that 911, you know, has sent out to everyone. But some of them, we can't, so we took everyone that had changed their address in the poll books, if we didn't have one or the other, then we mailed them another registration card, that way they can put that information on there, so then we would have, and we could go in there and change, you know, change their address. I would like this time for the poll workers, when they change that address, out from that, right there at the poll book where they change it, if they would put their driver's license number, that would help right there, you know. So I'm gonna mention that to them this time, you know, to see if they could do that. Driver's license, or if they don't have a driver's license, the last four numbers of the social, that way we can get in there and change, change their address.
So it sounds like if there's several people on the rolls now that are deceased, moved away, since the new system went into effect in 2006, we have to wait two general elections. We're looking at, in the next 2014 or so, we'll be able to start taking lots of people off that's no longer active.
Right.
And that's based on what the law allows us to do.
Right. And you'll see also, like if I go in there and say I would enter your name, if you're not canceled, you could be inactive, which would be, if we don't have one or the other, it would put you to inactive status, and then you will have to show that at the precinct, your driver's license, you know, to prove who you are and stuff, and then that can, you know, take you back to active. But like Dave Nichols said, we had, I went to train up there, and he said, you can't just go in there and remove someone, you know, you gotta take them to inactive for a little bit, then you can, you know, cancel it. And when you cancel, there's a notes section, and you, I mean, we keep all of the notes. You've gotta actually put what date, what went on, you know, if you mailed something out. So there's, you know, they gotta have all that before they'll allow you to go in and cancel them.
Any other questions?
So you feel that our purging system is what's going on in other counties, they're doing exactly the same thing, or is that...
Yeah, and actually, you know, we're doing everything, and every time I, if I have a question, just like Donald tells me, I'm gonna call the Secretary of State, and that's what I do. I mean, they, when I call and say it's Christie, they already know where I'm from, because, you know, that way we'll know everything and follow the law book and things like that. Now, I do leave Sunday, and I have training, and it's all county clerks, employees all over the state, and they're having training, and they're gonna go over everything. I mean, they have a list of stuff, they're going over, having a whole class on canvassing, absentee voting, purging, the NCOA cards, I mean, it's two full days of classes all day, to try to help all of our counties. Because the other day, when I had called and spoke to them about a question I had, just like she told me, that the law book reads two different ways. So, you know, it's sort of, a little bit of it contradicts itself, so I think they're working on that to fix, you know, fix the law book, so. But so far, you know, they've said that we're doing everything well, and, you know, staying on top of how we're supposed to do it and things.
It seems like since, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but since we don't have a hospital here, and many people pass away at the hospital, other counties that have a hospital are better positioned to be able to get the death certificates within that county, so that puts us at a disadvantage.
Yeah, and sometimes people will come in and say, you know, I need a death certificate, and, you know, they lived here in the county, but what they don't understand, that doesn't mean anything, you know. Only if they passed, like here, only if they passed away in their home, would be the only way that we would have, you know, we get the death certificate, and that's what's on record in the county clerk's office.
'Cause I do, I do sign quite a few death certificates of people that deceased their cattle in St. Mary's and Logan, you know, if they bring, if I get the death certificate anyway, so I don't know where that would go, but I know it goes back to the funeral home, but that's all I know.
Yeah, the state, they'll send them to us, that we, you know, whenever they get them in. It can vary, sometimes we get them, we can get them in two weeks. I have a lady this morning that had stopped by and had some kind of radio symbol, and we, in the county, and we've still got to receive that one too. So, you know, we sort of just wait, you know, wait till they send them, and then we record them. But the out-of-county ones, like I said, they come about every three or four months, but we don't always get all of them. It's whatever the state sends us, you know, everything comes from the state. So, you know, that's where we get all of that from. So we actually went through all of the death certificates that we have back there on record, and went into the system and spent a good week and a half checking and making sure every one of those death certificates that we have, the person is removed off of them.
When was that?
That was probably, I'm gonna say November, myself and Cricket, Lysandra Lichten's worked on that. So I would say that, you know, and now, like...
It was after the election, I'm sorry. After the election.
Yeah. Now, if someone comes in to probate in a state, they have to bring the death certificate if it's not, especially if it's not from Lincoln County. So the girls in the county clerk's office, when they do that, they make a copy of that death certificate, and it gets put straight into the election box. So that helps us right there. Sometimes, you know, we'll get that before we actually get the one from the state, and then we get from the state, and I go in there, I've already, you know, maybe I've already removed that person, and it'll read that to me.
Sounds like we're making progress. Appreciate it.
And hopefully we'll, you know, I'm sort of excited about going to this train, you know, that way we'll...
That's what, that's kind of the week you said.
Uh-huh, yeah. And so, I mean, they're gonna do, it's classes starting in the morning, they go off all day long. So, and they'll rotate you around and things, but they, I mean, they're going over everything.
Commissioner, Mr. Ramey and myself will be attending this election training as well, so that we will be updated on the candidacy and anything that the commission can help the clerk's office.
Good deal. Okay, appreciate it.
Rick's not here. Craig, do you have anything for the...
Welcome, Craig. Rick's in Illinois.
Yes, he is.
Good morning. I guess since Rick's not here, I could go ahead and update you all on the wastewater project, where we're at on that. We're getting ready to close out on phase two. We have spent all the money that DEP's gave, so that's always nice to say, that we don't have to send any money back, back to the state. So that's, that's good. We have a final inspection scheduled on the 28th. That's gonna be where we take Tim and the district sanitary, and some engineers from DEP, and we go out to all the 20 sites, and we kind of do a final overview, make sure all the reclamation and everything's complete, the homeowner's satisfied, that all everything's up to state code, and then we should be good on phase two. Phase three, we're kind of at a waiting point. We have all the permits entered DEP. As soon as John Perkins, who's the permit guy, gets us those permits, then the commission can sign the agreements or contracts with Wiseman, and we can begin construction. Now, one of the things that we had stipulated is that Board NAMONA, because these guys have never put in a P system before, is that Board NAMONA actually be on site for the first student installation. So we're looking, hopefully, depending on when the permits can come back, we're hoping that they come back the first week of April, and that will get us started in construction in April. Because we have to work around these, Board NAMONA, it's looking like it will either start the second or fourth week of April in construction in phase three. So that's, that's real good. And from what I understand, because of the test results that we're getting on this last round, you know, all of them are falling within the acceptable 200 colonies per 100 millimeters or less, DEP's real happy with that. And there's been a small amount of dialogue, had a possibility of going on and doing phase four. So when we had the community meeting this past Monday, and Thomas was there, we talked about how to, if we have more than 25 or 26 people show up, we have 40, I don't think DEP's willing to let us do 40, how to, what criteria, how do we decide as a community who gets the system? So we're working that out. So we're moving forward, it looks good, and I think everything's gonna work out good with phase three, and hopefully we'll go on into another phase four. So the branch that we have in the pipeline, the county clerk, which got $30,000, we want to purchase, I believe Mr. Whitton wants to purchase from Rover Shilling with that, so hopefully we'll get the lease down, get the contract signed soon, and get that done. The hazard mitigation, we've moved from the application, me accepting applications into the engineering stage, and I actually need a resolution from the commission to go ahead and do this, to start surveying those properties, since they are going to be mitigated. And what Brian and Tim, those are the guys from FEMA, would like for me to do is get two or three different quotes from surveyors on how much it would cost, and send it in to them. The county would be responsible for it, and then they would, we would be reimbursed for that, for that money. We would pay upfront, and then the hazard mitigation grant program would repay us for, for the four applications that I have, for the properties to be surveyed. So the trailways grants, we're still in the public comment period. I was gonna, actually, there was a RC&amp;D meeting this week that was canceled, and I was going to attend. During working with all this trailways thing, I kind of got moved onto the board as a member-at-large for Lincoln County. So it's been really nice to work with Jackie with that, moving, moving the trailways things forward, and that public comment period is gonna end the middle of April. Now, hopefully, what's gonna happen in a perfect world, hopefully, is that we're gonna get a designation for the guy and dog to be a scenic waterway. Now, in and of itself, that doesn't come with any monetary value. What that does is make us eligible for grant money, okay? So once we get the designation in June, then we're eligible to apply in November for the money, and hopefully start putting up kiosks and put-ins and take-outs for people's canoes and things like that. So that's, that's pretty much where we are with the grants in phase two.
We need a resolution supporting the hazard mitigation program.
Yeah, that it's okay to get the surveys. Motion second.
The motion second, oh, yes. Motion carries. When we did the other Judy mitigation projects, that's what we did, then we paid, and then they reimbursed us.
We got approved, are we approved for this project? I mean, we got the approval first. We had all the houses and everything that picked out, and we didn't have to put up any money until the end of the program. With this here, are we approved for the program?
We are, we have to, the, the application itself, they'll, they'll pay for all of the things that we have to put in the application. One of the things that goes in the application is a survey, whether they're in the flood zone or out of the flood zone. But I will double check.
Yeah, just keep it posted, because that seems a little bit different, but we'll see. All right, thanks. Thanks. Along the line with the put-ins and take-outs, I talked to Mr. McCann before about, you know, we built a new bridge over down there, and I stopped and looked at that, they, I believe they've got it set up pretty good. I mean, if we was gonna do that, we'd probably take out part of that guard rail that's supposed to be south there, but they've got an entrance-type thing already there that's guard-rilled off. And it looks to me like it goes ahead down to where you can actually carry your boat down to the river and everything right there. So probably all we have to do there, if we did do that, is maybe take part of that guard rail out, maybe gravel that a little bit right there, before they go down in there and park and stuff, so.
That's one of the, the thing that we'll get ready for the grant in November, is we'll actually have a group of us that started already belly and float down, and we, Jackie and I have already started the information gathering, but there's some things that we're not gonna know unless we actually just get on the river. And so we're gonna float down and put in there things like Dr. Vance has said here, that, you know, well, we'll need to take this part of the guard rail out, or, you know, we need to redo this, put in a takeout. And if we can't put one every seven miles, which is what the, what we're recommending now, to put in, put in and take out every seven miles, maybe we'll do one every eight or every six and a half, just whatever county needs.
I never wanted the hards there, it's gonna need a grad, I mean, 'cause it's fairly into stuff.
I was, when you had the trailways meeting at Guyanua, I was impressed with the number of people that showed up from the Branchland Ranger area. So we're talking about the different areas that would be possible to work with, and we'll take out. So I think that it's promising.
It is, and we haven't received really any negative comments actually at this point.
I think you were saying, I've been positive, it's a little bit of excitement.
It is, we're looking forward to it. I think Lincoln County the best for me.
Yeah, appreciate it.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is the Hards Center and the McCorcall Community Center updates. Thomas, would you wanna update what we've been doing at the Hards Center?
I added my report, you just wanna wait till the end?
That's fine. Do you have anything for McCorcall?
I have the minutes, if you'd like me to go over those.
Yes.
Not much. I think Scott's been in touch with you all. Scott did the minutes the last time, plus my printer was back from that. But I straightened that out with a nice moment. Anyway, and I don't think he gave you all a copy of anything, so maybe this'll make up for it a little bit. The only thing I have is, the Girl Scouts will be using the building every other Thursday, the second and fourth, starting on Thursday, March 10th, and I've seen that happen. There'll be a bluegrass music performance on March 27th, the time is 1:00 to 5:00. The Fire Marshal passed the inspection on the building, there's a few minor things that have to be done, and I understand they're being taken care of. And a new date for the auction, the last email I got was April 15. Angie McCormick has agreed to be dropped from the board of directors, and I think, I don't know if Scott talked to y'all about that or not, but we'll have to have a replacement for that. An Easter egg hunt is planned for April the 9th, and Jennifer's in charge. Gloria Brown is working on a program to cook dinner for the Niners for Coal River Energy. It's gonna be a pretty big project, and she can get that going, so she probably gonna need all of us to help on that. Our next meeting is tomorrow night at 6:00, and you're welcome to come if you like.
This is your first official meeting, is it tomorrow?
Well, I'm not really sure. The lady from, and I forget her name, I'm sorry, I got the email here, I think it's from the Hards. Scott has called her and asked her to come over and give us some pointers on how to run the community center, and she's coming over there tomorrow to meet with us. And she's coming over there tomorrow to meet with us. And I don't know, this, as far as I know, is not one that's open to the public. We were supposed to start that in the first meeting in April. But anyway, this should be, I hope not a long meeting, but you know, it'd be one that she's gonna give us some advice on. But like I said, the commission is always welcome to come to the meetings.
Well, I appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
Next thing on the agenda is new business, first bill submitted for payment.
Second.
In motion second, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointments, bills and settlements is submitted for approval by the governor's department clerk.
Second.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
Thomas, do you wanna talk about this next?
Well, actually, I would ask the sheriff to speak on this issue since it's all of the first of related.
We, what we're doing, we're asking the commission to adopt a resolution to encourage the governor, Earl Ray Tomlin, to sign the HB 2505 bill into law that says any person who sells, buys or possesses synthetic drugs such as Vassal is guilty of a misdemeanor and can be sentenced up to six months in prison and fined up to $1,000. I have in my hand here petitions that's been throughout the county, approximately close to 500 right now, but all hasn't been picked up at this time. And I'd like y'all to consider that, to make a resolution to do that for the governor. Also, a little story to go along with that, to kind of give you some ideas on how concerned we are with this and how dangerous it is, not only to the public, but also my officers. The other evening, they responded to a call that this guy was seeing purple monkeys in the tree and they were shooting them out of the tree, been taking the Vassals, he had a 20 gauge shotgun with slugs in it. These guys had a pretty tough time getting the situation under control. Several units throughout the county was responding, and we had calls like that, don't want one officer on the scene. But this is the kind of things that we're dealing with, and we've had several calls in the past few weeks of similar situations. And stories are starting to pop up every day of different stories. I heard one this morning about some guy was actually on the hood of a truck and they was squirming, trying to shake him off the truck.
Yeah, the person called me about that.
So, it's a big concern.
They should tell me yesterday that one was holding an infant with a knife that's valid.
That was over the weekend, it was Saturday night, these guys responded to that.
And knowing the people involved in that, I'm sure they wouldn't have, they would've done anything like that if it hadn't been for getting on those drugs.
I agree. Several people's involved, I know, and it's become a huge problem.
Yeah, the reason that I asked for this to be placed on the agenda and then later had talked to sheriff to see if we've had many complaints here in the county was because through Facebook, email and phone calls, I have had so many people across this county calling me and saying that they're their kids, their brothers, their grandkids, people close to them they loved and cared about, that they would never have expected to have been addicted to drugs of any kind. And I know we hear these stories, not only with synthetic drugs, but all drugs. These kids are, and adults are getting addicted to this and it's so easily accessible because it's available in the stores.
And there's more names, all petitions haven't been picked up, there's more names to come on this petition.
I would make the motion to send this resolution to the governor.
Thank you.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
Next thing on the agenda, need a motion to approve a donation in the amount of $500 to the Lincoln County Hospital Skills USA Chapter for State Competition. And commissioner, there's like 25 kids that are going to the competition, it's like in auto mechanics, welding, everything that would have to do with the vocational trade.
And they also get to go to Washington DC?
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve a drawdown request, number one, in the amount of $6,000 from the governor's Community Participation Grant Program for the Allen Creek Lions Club and the Project Completion Form and give Charles S. McCann present authorization to sign this stated application.
So moved.
Motion second, in all yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the Democrat and Republican election officials for the upcoming special election to be held on May the 14th, 2011, as submitted.
Second.
Motion second, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to appoint Shawnita Wiley as administrator to the estate of Blaine Black due to the death of the current administrator, set bond at $1,000.
So moved.
Motion second, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to reopen the estate of Creever L. Saul to transfer assets that were left off of the appraisement to the rightful owners as requested by Amea Saul Sowers, administrator.
Second.
Motion second, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the budget for the fiscal year, July the 1st, 2011 to June the 30th, 2012, is submitted, to be submitted to the state office, all for approval.
I'll second that. We've got just the changes that you emailed me about.
I really, I agree, motion second, and I think everybody agreed that we'd make that change. What the commission has done since we had our meeting, continued to work on the budget and I suggested commissioners via email that we provide each elected official with $5,000 to be used sort of at their discretion in the benefit of their employees. It could be salary increase, it could be maybe overtime, it could be contracted service that they may need someone to work. So, it's just one of those things that really wasn't sure how to deal with and we deliberate back and forth, so yesterday I finally made a decision, that's what I've put together and proposed and by email, that's what we had done. The only side thing I probably could on was that in gist, that in order to get this money, they would have to quit smoking. That seems like the first thing. But anyway, we have a motion second to adopt a budget, oh yes, motion carries.
I need a motion to approve the appointment, study of occasional Lincoln County Commission by Donald Seigwin, Parkus Falls. Earl Stephen Lawrence is executor of the estate of Lindell Davis Lawrence. Larry Browning's administrator of the estate of Deborah Lynn Browning. Hope F. Wilkinson as administrator of the estate of Jerry Thomas Flowers. Jerry Lee Farmer's administrator of the estate of Lisa Ann Loew. Terry Blankenship as executor of the estate of Troy Etzel Blankenship. Corbra Baker as administrator of the estate of Leveil Dean. Carrie Cade Mayberry as administrator of the estate of James R. Soss.
Second.
Motion second, oh yes, motion carries.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
I've got a couple different things and I apologize for not being on here. Out of my office at the conclusion of 2008-2010 audit, it's been determined that an adjustment is needed to the monthly financial statements for the uncollectible insufficient fund checks in the amount of $3,972.18. I'm requesting the commission approval for necessary adjustments on that. And also, I have copies of that for each one of you. We have a little better handle on it now than we've had in the past. We're issuing warrants for insufficient funds. Anything that's current, we're trying our best to collect those, but if anything that's past a year, we're not able to collect that at this point. So, possibly, hopefully in the future, we've got a little better handle on it than what we've had, have had in the past. Requesting that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Just to give you this later.
Motion for, as the sheriff.
I got no problem doing this, but you don't think this would have to be an intended item to do that, because it's not.
Well, it probably could be, but I guess.
I'm okay if that's what you can do, I'm just wondering because it's not an intended item.
Well, I think it needs to probably be done, you want to get your books in order.
Yeah, and it was just brought to my attention, we just got everything done.
You'd have done before the next meeting, no?
We have to have it done before the next meeting?
No, it can be done.
Okay.
The sooner the better, I'm sure.
Right.
It's not an adjustment on the bank side, it's just an adjustment on the book side.
Right.
We definitely need to have it done before we do our next fiscal year settlement, which is gonna be done in June, our fiscal year, 2011 will end in June. We definitely need to have that adjustment. As you can see from what I've provided, the bulk of the amount that we need to make the entry for is for the fiscal year 2007 audit. The rest of it, you know, 2008 was $200 some dollars, 2009, $31, because since I've been the chief, I've really stayed, you know, stayed up on these when they come in and I call them if I can. If I can't reach them, I send them certified mail. If I get no response, then I file paperwork for batch of one. So, like I said, I'm kind of, this is a clean, basically a cleanup since I've gone into the office, because most, the bulk of it is before I, you know.
But I guess, I just think that, I realize it's not on the agenda, but this seems like it would, in goodwill for the work that you've done, focusing on this and making sure things are in order.
That's why I.
We entertain a motion that, whilst you're here to accept this.
I'll move on that motion.
And I'll second that. In all yes, vote?
I'll vote no, just to virtue what I say, I think it needs to be in June.
Let the record show, no vote, Dr. Vance, yes vote, Mr. Ramy and myself.
One other thing that I have, and apologize for it not being on the agenda, but it kind of all hit pretty quick, and I need to get letters to the community centers, corporate community center and also the Harts Veterans Center and to you guys for the use of the courthouse. It's a program, actually done a commercial this week on it, taken by Lincoln County one pill at a time, it's a collection agency, it'll be happening April the 30th to have a collection point for all the medicines in your cabinets. It'd be three drop-off points through the county. We, I have to have certified officers there to collect it. Once we get them, they all go to, the DEA will come and pick it up, they'll dispose of it, no cost to us. And I've also made some suggestions to DEA on what I feel would actually help in the future for that, and hopefully they'll take some of those into consideration. But I need to get letters and approval for the use of the courthouse that day, it'd be from 10 to 2 at each location.
I'll motion.
Second. Yes.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience that's not on the agenda that would like to speak at this time?
Hi, April.
Hello, Mr. McCann, how are you? Just a couple of points I wanted to make. We continue to put information on the WBEU Extension Service website that I think will be helpful to people here in the county. We've created a producers page where I'd like to list individuals in the county that may have produce items or locally grown items that they want to sell and would like to use our website as another method of advertisement for their product. All they have to do is call our office and give us the information that they want us to put on the site, name, telephone number, products they may have, cost, that kind of thing, we'd be happy to put that on the website. We've also loaded up information on different kinds of plant diseases, insect entomology type issues that people might want to be made aware of. We also have loaded up a lot of our 4H camp information for pre-registration, things like that. It's just another way for us to make things available to people in the county. We'll continue to do it the way we've always done it, if people need things available to them, of course we'll do that, not everyone has a computer to get access, but just another avenue for us to open up to people if they'd like to use it. We'll continue to do it the other way if people need it that way. The other two things, again with the two classes we have going on, Mountain Voyagers, we're filling that class pretty quickly. And we're not making medicine, we're making recipes, we're not in the business of being doctors, so we're not doing medicines, we're doing recipes that you can use for your own personal benefit as you see fit. We will not be harvesting ginseng either, but that will be done on my personal property and I've given permission for the people in the class to do that, the harvesting of the items that we can harvest without permits and things like that. In honor of St. Patrick's Day, I just wanna let everyone know that there's an awesome program that's gonna be on the History Channel tonight called Irish in America. And a part of our, our job through the Extension Service is education of people and it's always good to be educated on different ethnic backgrounds that may be a part of your community and the Irish community certainly is a part of our community here in West Virginia, so I just wanted to let people know about that particular program that's gonna be on tonight if they'd like to watch that, I'm sure it's gonna be a good program to get to know your Irish roots, so to speak, so that's all I have.
And April would have worn the green today, but since she gets her checks from WBEU.
Anyone else in the audience that would like to speak at this time? Okay, we'll go on to the commission, concern, may I report to Mr. Ramy?
Okay, over the last two weeks, on March the 8th, I attended the annual meetings with the county officials here in Lincoln County to discuss their budgets. On March the 9th, I visited the local McDonald's here in Hamlin and was accompanied by Commission President McCann and Administrator Judy Johnson and then the sheriff decided to go with us as well. I was glad that I was at the courthouse that day because I was happy to be able to go down to help deliver the pot tabs that's been collected across Lincoln County over the last year to give to the Ronald McDonald House. And overall, we had nine boxes of pot tabs which totaled over 200 pounds, so that was a worthwhile venture and it was only made possible thanks to the sporting, the teams across the county, the athletes, the organizations and nonprofit groups that came here before the commission and partnered with us to make that become a reality.
Pass on Robert.
Yes. On March the 10th, I attended the 2030 Annual FFA and 4H Ham Bait and Egg Show and that was at the Pullman Plaza Hotel. Lincoln County was well represented, we had four Lincoln County students participate and Sheila Fraser with the Parks and Recreation attended the event with me. Also, that day, I attended the special call meeting of the county commission to sit down with the volunteer fire departments and the management officials with the emergency office here in Lincoln County to get a dialogue started. There was lots of concern and questions from both sides which really surfaced after many months of just not being able to really carry a dialogue on about what's going on, lack of communication. So, after having that meeting, I believe, and I think the other commissioners would agree, that new dialogue and larger communication now have been established and I don't see us getting back to that point ever again. I met with and discussed water issues with residents of the Left Fork of the Mud River area, resident Ken Bailey was really interested in trying to include Bar Camp Road into the water plan for that area. He even expressed his willingness to canvass the area to see how many people would be interested in water and even go back and help to collect the deposits that would be needed to get people signed up for the water. I followed up with Mike Mossdeller and Mike, I know has followed up with Ken and hopefully we can make that become a reality. I think it would involve about 44 different houses. During the discussion with people from the area, one of the concerns they had was the fact that when you start moving to bring water to areas of rural areas, the people in those areas don't realize that there's a threshold, you have to get 80% of people to sign up. And some of the people in the outlying areas, probably across the state, probably across the country, that they say that, well, when the water gets here, I'll sign up. And they don't realize that to be able to get the water to become a reality in the first place, you have to have the 80% threshold. So, one of the things that the people I spoke with in Left Fork told me was that we needed to try to more effectively relay the message to the outlying. to try to more effectively relay the message to the outlying areas that the eighty percent is really important. I attended the Green Wastewater Project Phase Three meeting that Craig indicated at the Mud River Fire Department on the fourteenth, and there was twenty-five or thirty people present, and really, when you're able to go out to those type of meetings, and you see government working through Craig and Rick and others through grant writing, sitting down talking about the services that's being delivered in the outlying areas for real people in real places, and you see the dialogue happen, it reminds you of why we all do what we do to begin with. I mean, that's so important to keep communities alive, and to make sure that every person understands and feels like they are a part of government, so that there's not barriers, because after time, if there's not dialogue, as we saw with the fire departments and the management officials, barriers do start to form. I met with and discussed the Lincoln County Quilt Trail Society, which works with the Parks and Recreation, they're putting together these blocks for quilt trails, and they're putting them across the county on barns. Well, I received a phone call from Sheila Fraser and Evelyn Cartwright, the president and treasurer of the Parks and Recreation, they told me that, you know, we're trying to put this together, but we're running into a big problem, we don't have anywhere to actually be able to meet and paint these blocks, so I was able to come over, meet with them, and we had space available in April's old office, so they've moved in April's office, and they're currently using that space to make that become a reality. On March the fifteenth, the sheriff and I went to the Logan PSD meeting. I had received phone calls from residents from the Francis Creek area, that on the agenda that particular day was an item to approve a plan to extend water for the Francis Creek area. It's like the Left Fork and Mud River, it's an area that desperately needs water, it's been mined, and the water that was there, it's not the best quality now, and also, a lot of the quantity has dried up, some people just don't have water. So we attended that meeting, and I reminded the Logan PSD that the Lincoln County Commission had contributed fifty thousand to the project, and we sincerely appreciate their willingness to look at the Hartz area, even though it's Lincoln County, and help us deliver water to that part of the county that's at this point underserved. And then the sheriff expressed that, that there's not a lot the sheriff's office can do in bringing water, but one thing he would like to offer, when they bring in the pipes and the equipment, if they ever need anyone to do traffic control, he would work with the auxiliary deputies and deputies to make sure that happened, and then they really appreciated it. I met with Ann Ramsar, who's here, she's the AmeriCorps Vista Prevention Program Worker for Step by Step, and I hope everyone has a chance to talk to her and welcome her to Lincoln County. What we talked about and met with each other about was the coalition that she works with is putting together a program to work on substance abuse, and I was asked to join that group on behalf of local government, and I see the prescription abuse in this part of the state as an epidemic, so I said absolutely, I would love to be a part of it, and then after reading the Charleston Gazette last night, I saw that the House Health and Human Resources Chairman Don Perdue is requesting ten million dollars to be budgeted, so the state can improve substance abuse prevention, intervention, treatment, and recovery programs, and it should be noted that West Virginia has the nation's highest rate of drug overdose deaths, so, you know, if there's anything we can do locally grassroots to try to help our people find solutions and avenues to get clean, we should do that, and that's why I really appreciate Ann and Step by Step for the work they do. On numerous occasions over the last two weeks, I've met with and spoken to members of the Hartz and McCorkle Community Center boards, and both boards seem to be moving forward with their spring programs, putting together events, and I know at McCorkle, the crime watch and the volunteers, and we have some here today, the McCorkle Community Center would not be able to function without what you guys do, and we appreciate you. I have had numerous discussions with people about the synthetic drug abuse in Lincoln County, that's why the sheriff and I decided to kind of partner and put the resolution on the agenda to urge the governor to go ahead and sign the bill to make it law. Another issue that, talked to the parents who've been active with trying to get the autism bill passed, and just to give you an update, the bill did pass the House and the Senate, and waiting for the governor to sign, so that's a victory for so many people in this state. And I'm going to be traveling with Dallas Clay through Mud River and Left Fork, we are going to travel with Steve McCallis and highlight places that need to be cleaned up, and do our best to clean up that part of Lincoln County, we're going to do that with them the next two weeks. That's my report.
Sounds good. Mr. Ramey?
Well, I attended a budget meeting with the elected officials, as the other commissioners did, and I also participated in the firefighters' concerns, who they had via phone. I've also been working, as some of you know, the Governor Manchin appointed the Driver's License Advisory Board, and I've been working with them and the legislature concerning changes in the laws as far as the way they're worded, and in particular in relation to mental health, and deciding, this board decides basically what laws will be used in terms of when someone comes back to driving after they've had an insult such as a stroke or a heart attack, or if they do have a mental illness, and which ones can or cannot drive, and things of that nature, and so I've been working with them on that. I talked to some of the members that were at the water meeting in Logan, that the sheriff and Mr. Ramey attended concerning the Francis Creek section of Hartz, the Hartz there, and they were impressed with what was said at that time, I think, with both the sheriff and Mr. Ramey. And I think we need, on all these projects, keep, make sure that we have a voice at each one of these meetings, and I know the citizens out there do attend too, but I do think it shows that we're serious about what, that's all I have.
Mr. Ramey? Starting with March the ninth, being on the board of the Tri River Transit, we had our board meeting and basically approved our budget we've been working on some time, and basically, we believe that we can fix things even to increase ridership, we think that, of course, the price of fuel right now may increase anyway, but we believe that everything's going, is looking up down the center, they picked up two new buses this week to provide additional service. All four counties now have, with our approval of the budget this morning, have raised their amount of contribution from ten thousand up to forty thousand, which Mingo County had always been putting forty thousand in, and that's sort of, one of the ideas was to make everybody else come up to their level. They wanted bus service so bad a couple of years ago, that's what they said they would provide, and they have each year, so, and we are providing service to them. I did also attend a meeting at Ronald McDonald's program, and, you know, how this came about was, basically, I was at a Region Two meeting a couple of years ago, and the lady that was over at Huntington, Ronald McDonald House, explained to people in the audience that Ronald McDonald's is a separate entity from the McDonald Corporation, and the only real support they get is by using the Ronald McDonald figure, plus having the boxes in the restaurants for donations, but their biggest money that they had to pay utilities and upkeep of their buildings was across the country, was aluminum pop tabs, and of course, sitting there in the audience, I just didn't, I never realized that, and so, anyway, come back with that on my mind, thinking, well, maybe we could do that, and we started this thing, as Thomas mentioned there, that asking anyone that wants to participate to assist us in raising those, much as we could, we had no idea what we could do, I thought a couple of boxes would probably be good, but as Judy maybe mentioned there, Thomas, someone, that, we've had two or three people that really got into this, and had really, you know, Sue Burke was one of them, she's always been very helpful, Mr. Roberts back there, Mr. McClure out of Woodville, some of them just really got into it, and to raise two or eight pounds, you can pick one little tab up, and you, at my age, I'm not sure I even feel it sometimes, but I think it's there, but it's, I just think it's great, and of course, we give money to help program, but the idea was, and as we do that, a token appreciation, if you can participate in this, and of course, my thoughts was, that people can learn something from it, how they might help somebody else, and I think that's what I seen the benefit of it was, it was sort of a fun type thing to do, and we are going to continue to do it, I noticed yesterday that the box already started down there, it's another paper box, they're used to paper boxes, and I've seen some tabs already in, so we'll just continue to do that. And that was the second time, we did take a bunch to Canoa County last year. Also, March the tenth, and the sheriff may want to speak to this, attended a meeting at the nine-one-one center, and basically, the program's sponsored by the West Virginia Sheriff's Association, and it's basically one of those things that we're still seeing the benefits of what our late Senator Byrd was able to do, and he had appropriated some, I think, three million dollars to, for a contract to be awarded to someone that could come up with a program where they would fly over the whole state of West Virginia, and be able to show all of the facilities, buildings, whatever, on every parcel of property across the state, by county, and the person that was basically going over that with us, was basically talking about how you could use this in your county, of course, they've got this program, they've got the contract to do it, they've done pretty much all of it, they're not finished yet, but what they were showing is it was interactive type information that you could take from where they've done this flyover, and look at any parcel in the county, and be able to see what it was in two thousand and ten, maybe two years later, see what, if there's any growth, if there's any changes, where the assessor could use this in order to look at ways to make sure the assessments were being, you know, proper, or facilities maybe gone, so it's one of those things that has multiple uses, I think, that we've seen it down there, I'm not sure what we're going to do yet, but it, I didn't even realize there was such a thing going on until the sheriff said, you know, the association's got this program, and we've got this meeting down there, and I attended it with the sheriff and Assessor Dempsey and Guy Browning, I believe it was, plus Alan Holder. Sheriff, you got any additional?
Yes, the Sheriff's Association, you know, is a big, it's on that grant money, and they're paying for it, and the benefits to our office is that, for instance, if we had a problem with the school, their nine-one-one center would have this, all our cars is equipped with computers, we could pull it right up on that computer, we could sit and see the structure of that building, all entries on top of the building, we could see the air condensers, someone could hide behind the air condensers, we had an incident there with someone, you know, that tried to take over the school with kids there, I believe we have some kind of pictures that we can sit and look at and determine what entry we're going to make, and also, it's not included in this program, but for a small fee, on top of that, this company is willing to go into these buildings and structure it where they get to construction of it, and we can also have that on our computer, they'll number the doors, say for instance, someone calls from the school, that they're behind room number nine, or in the cafeteria, we have that whole picture on that screen, the dimensions, anything that was in that building that they could hide behind, the way to send a team in there to try to bring them out. Say for instance, we don't have a SWAT team here, but we draw a SWAT team in, we had that Austin situation there, out of another county, they get set and study this before they enter that building, and they know exactly where everything's at, so it's a huge benefit if it's an emergency situation in Austin, and also, the fire departments also with the computer, have a team to take those in.
I was impressed, and sort of overwhelmed too, but it's something, it's useful for sure, of course, in order to do down the road, do more things, it will take the money, but we're just having, then we have that choice to make, but people have all the basics, as I understood it. March the eleventh, participated in a telephone conference with Randy Maggert of Margis Coal, basically, he and I have conversed back and forth, we met in the office two or three times, trying to reach an agreement and get the papers signed, things, for the coal company to provide fifty thousand dollars for the Man's Knob Water Project. If you discussed your, I go about Francis Creek, if you look at the project we're working on, building up there, almost ready, completing, I guess, the upper little Hartz project, is sort of like a Y, and each end of, before the project really is ending, far as the money available, stops before you get to Man's Knob properties, and it also stops before you get to Francis Creek. So what we're trying to do is, on the right side, on the Man's Knob, is work with the coal company and the Logan PSD, while we're in there, let's try and get this finished from, as far as they went, so many feet up the hill, three or four hundred feet up the hill, that we put in a pump station and pumped the water on up the hill to several houses on both sides of the road, as well as all the way across into, I guess, the Trough Fork area, so that there'll be several other people receive water, but we basically did reach the agreement, he said, go ahead and email him the invoices for the fifty thousand, and they would get that paid to us in no more than six payments, but they would get that to us, because the project's going to be ready to go here soon. Also, further discussed, followed up on the thing Mr. Ramey mentioned about the Francis Creek, and talked with Rick Roberts, the engineer from DL Robinson, about the fifty thousand dollars that was available, and tried to put that into the project, and he assured me that that was what they would do, that there'd be a commitment showing it to Lincoln County, was willing to put local money up in order to make this project happen. On the fifteenth of March, traveled with Mr. Whitten here, and meet with one of thirty-seven counties really, receiving money from Governor Tomlin, and we basically received additional three thousand two hundred and six dollars to, as we've heard before, about records management, and that brings a total of seventeen thousand. On that same afternoon, after dropping Mr. Whitten off, went to Huntington to the Workforce Investment Board meeting, and at that meeting, was informed that, among other things, that there's going to be some positions available in the county come to July, where that we might be able to, we find someone that maybe, that needs a job for one year, that we may be able to use those. Also, some out of school youth money's going to be available, that we'll be able to make some improvements, maybe with those kind of things in the summer employment program, as well as throughout the school year. Also, at that meeting, we celebrated a little bit with one of our board members, Art Kirkendall, Commissioner from Logan County, who retired, so he was there just to receive a plaque. Also followed up with discussion we had at the last meeting with vendors on Big Ugly, who are the salvage yard people over there, and basically, just told them that we had an issue brought up to the County Commission, and that just wanted to know what was their normal procedures as it pertained to particularly copper and those things that we hear about being stolen, whatever, and a lady named Nikki was basically the receptionist, and she said that they take lots of measures to make sure that they have the proper identity of everyone that comes in there, from getting their license, copy of their license, their driver's license, they run a video camera all the time on who brings in, shows what they unload, and all those kind of things, so she assured me that they keep also a report on who brings how much items and things, and there has been occasions where that they have reported to the police about items that have been brought in that they just suspect that might have been stolen or whatever, so I was pretty impressed when I got to talk with her about what they do on their salvage. I had, last evening, emailed Alan Holder, asking him if he- I had last evening emailed Alan Holder, asking him if he could be here this morning to give us an update on what had transpired since the meeting last week with the firefighters. And he said he'd try to be here, but they, I was trying to find here, he sent me out back an email last night, said he'd try to be here, but he has some things going this morning, he wasn't sure. But I would like to just take a minute to brief what he has shared with me. We are changing the routing of all the 911 trunks into the county starting at 10:00 a.m. If all goes well, he says, I'll try to be there in person, if not, you know, here's the update. All equipment has been ordered, as we discussed last week. The final cost will be in the low $40,000, somewhere in that area. I don't have a definite cost till we see what the installation of the dishes will cost. I expect to have most of the equipment in, in three to four weeks. The Samirco Fire slash EMS tower was placed back into service on Monday. It is much better than it was. They had taken it to Huntington and took it all apart, cleaned it. There was a massive amount of bugs, I don't know whether that's ladybugs or roaches, but they were there. And they cleaned all the contact boards, all the computer wire and appears to be working okay now. Also, our radio console vendor, Abtech, was scheduled to come next week. We are able to get that moved up and he arrived, so apparently moving forward. He has looked at the two main issues that we reported and has sent files back to the programmer for review and hospital solutions. He will be with us through Friday, all this week, and we should know more about it than a day or so. I was able to get the microwave installed in the last two days and with some additional programming tomorrow, we may be ready to go. So start testing for the weekend. But anyway, it seems like that by having the discussion we had and the emphasis that was placed in support of everyone, that progress is being made. That's all I have.
Is there any other issues that need to be brought before the commission at this time?
You'll have a nice day, enjoy. It'll be good out there. Take note at the bottom of our next meetings. Regular meeting the 7th. Basically, we'll be recessing this meeting since it's a budget meeting until April, at which time we'll lay the levy, just the way the law reads. But we will meet regular on the 7th and we'll be back on the 15th and with the voting thing. The 19th, lay the levy, 21st for the regular meeting. Motion to recess. Motion to recess.